All right. Thank you, everyone. We're going to go ahead and start the Pecosa Planning Commission. We do have a work session this evening. So if Mr. Canelo would like to start us off with the work session topics.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to, I'll say, reverse order of the order of your packet. The first thing I'd like to discuss is the CCIP, which has been prepared and was sent to you all last week. Hopefully, you all had a chance to look over the document. But being that we have a couple new members, I think it would be of a courtesy to refer to the memo from the Assistant City Manager, Anya O'Connell, who's here with us to answer questions any of you may have. But basically, the CCIP serves as a planning document for the city in certain projects to be funded by various sources, but sources that are identified in the document and for City Council to hold their public hearing that requires a recommendation from you all tonight. So I don't, unless it's your pleasure, I don't intend on going through that document page by page. Like I said, I think you all had a chance to review it. But if you had any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But if not, the expert is here, the Assistant City Manager, so we can proceed however you wish.
I don't know if everyone had a chance to look through it. Were there any questions? I know for me, it was really helpful to have, as always, at the front, the status of previous years allotments and kind of the status of how everything's going. So, yeah, is there any, are there any questions for the existing plan?
I saw a lot of stuff on conditional use permits and stuff, but I don't remember seeing the capital improvement.
It was a big attachment. In fact, I don't think we have it printed out because it's so lengthy.
I think I saw something and I started reading it. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I've got it pulled up here. If there's anything in it we'd like to look through, but of course, Ms. O'Connell will say she'd like to address it. Madam Chair?
Absolutely. So if you have any questions, if you'd like for us to kind of scan through and maybe identify those previous projects, if you recall, a few years back, I believe Bonnie, Commissioner O'Shyver, indicated that she'd like to see updated projects. So we tried to make sure those were included for everybody. And our apologies, we have not been here for a couple of years, and COVID and lack of a Director of Finance has hindered us. But now that we're fully staffed, this will probably be my last time presenting because I will be passing the torch on. But a lot of things have changed. With COVID, we received CARES money, so we were able to purchase certain things that were in the CCIP that we were able to take care of. And then the wonderful ARPA money came through, where we had close to about $12 million provided to us. $10 million of it was revenue replacement. So we had a caveat of projects that we determined we wanted to do with that, one being the Public Safety Building. Without that funding, we would not be able to go forth and do the Public Safety Building. That was crucial. That is a once-in-a-generation expenditure that we are investing in the city. So we're excited about that. And then a couple few little things that we're able to do, like ditching work, that the other, because it's like a right side and a left side. The right side is revenue replacement. Those are easy. We can identify things to purchase. But on the left side, we really have to follow the government's laws. And so we had to identify things, like we helped fund some of the HVAC for the primary school, for the middle school. So we're given a couple million for that. And then a couple other projects that we're trying to get through that have been in our CCIP that we've just not been able to fund. But what you have for '24 are the only things that the General Fund and Debt Service could cover. We did not include anything else to be mindful of the fact that we're getting ready to present to City Council next month. So you're only going to have those projects that we truly can support.
I don't remember seeing this particular thing because I have the old Capital Improvement Program, and it looks a lot like what you're showing up there now, what you're going to buy and what year and so forth. But I, and you're right, it's a thick document, but I don't remember seeing it.
Well, how about we go through page five, which is really crucial.
It should be just the highlights.
Certainly. The City Manager, you're on it, Thomas. Come on down.
Did you say five or not?
Well, five of the PDF. I'm not sure if five, I mean, five of the document, not five of the PDF.
That's the background page. Is that what you wanted?
Keep going. Right there. So can you blow that back up?
Sure.
So for fiscal year 2024, we are recommending replacement of two police vehicles for a total of 145. We are also recommending replacement of Medic 11. Back a few years ago, the City Council appropriated 50% of Medic 11 and hoping that we would get a grant. We were not successful with the grant, so therefore, we're funding the additional 50% of the Medic. Additionally, we have the ladder truck. Our ladder truck is about 25 years old. It's about 10 years past its life, so we definitely need to replace it, especially with the Legacy coming aboard. We're actually looking to get a tower. So therefore, instead of going up a ladder, they'll have a tower to bring them up and bring people down appropriately. That's at a tune of $1.7 million, unfortunately. We are going to do debt service to fund that project. We also have the Victory Boulevard. This is a smart funding by VDOT. This would be the local share of the total project, and this is a victory to kind of expanding Victory Boulevard going into Yorktown. Our traffic signal support, we need to start funding money so our engineer, our city engineer, can make sure those things stay operational because, as we know, the hindrance to our citizens when those lights go down is truly unfortunate. People don't know how to go through red and yellow and may cause accidents. We also have our City Hall doors. As you come into both the entrance here as exiting, our doors have aged, and they need to be updated for, not only for security, but for weathering. We've got a lot of efficiencies going out the door that we need to correct. And then, of course, our financial system. We're speaking early with one of our commissioners, how going to MUNIS, we still have an old system that requires an IBM to be replaced every five years, and it's time to do so. The other little things are utility replacements. That's done by revenue. So therefore, those are usually never questioned. They do upgrades on their pump stations, whether it's roof, whether it's backup generators. But that's just making sure things continue to flow in the city. No pun intended. So for '24, those are the only things that the City Manager is recommending to the Planning Commission to be recommended to City Council because we can only support it with the General Fund transfer, with debt service, i.e., putting it on our credit card, or with revenue from the sewer.
I have a question. It's a little bit adjacent to this, but the York County portion of the Victory Boulevard enhancements, I saw that was part of the SMART scale, and then I saw it got dropped off, but I called York County, and they said, oh, I think we still have funding on that. But I think it dropped out of the SMART scale. And I know it's not what we're talking about tonight, but just out of curiosity, so it's still being funded for the York County side?
Currently, it's still on there. We're still, it's, there's various categories, and so far, we're still in like category three. We have not dropped out. But there is a potential we could be dropped from that.
Both the York County and the Pecosa side could be dropped?
Only on Victory. Because we're still proceeding with Creek. That's a different type of project that is proceeding, but for the Victory one, there is a potential we'll be dropped. But again, we'll just re-up it every year.
Okay. Thank you.
When I signed on, they gave me a copy of the Capital Improvement Program. Are there copies available, or is it after the council approves it, or?
I can get you a copy once approved.
That's it, once it's approved?
I get you a copy after it's approved.
People are always asking me about something, and I know I've read that thing once, and at least I can tell them what's going on. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments about what's, what's in there? And the Public Service Building, that was, or the Public Safety Building, that was last year's.
Correct. And we were only successful because of the funding from ARPA. So we have done two things for that. We have the ARPA funding, and we've already gone out for, or we've included the debt issue, we've already done the debt issuance for the building to make sure we can go forward with it. So our credit card, initially, if you recall, way back when, we had $23 million that we could borrow on our credit card. $20 million of it went to schools, and $3 million went to city. So from that standpoint, we have started paying down some of our existing debt, so what we've been able to borrow still equates to the penny that we're accepting from the citizens, so we do not have to increase taxes for it. I know that's always important. Citizens think about, well, are you going to impact me by increasing taxes? No, that is not the case.
The ladder truck, is that because Legacy is having three-story buildings over there, or?
That, as well as our truck, is old. It has continued to experience mechanical issues, being that it has aged. So we definitely, even if it wasn't Legacy, we'd still be presenting a truck. It would probably still be a ladder truck. But now Legacy, we're now looking to a tower truck.
Is that like a bucket truck that goes up?
Yep.
Okay.
You think of like when they do the lights, they have the man going up in the bucket. It's better for safety for both our firefighters as well as the citizens, so that way, they don't have to climb down a ladder.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
I know we have a couple new commissioners. If y'all need, you know, welcome, any questions you may have, being the first time that you've seen the document.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you. All right. And we have another topic on the agenda for the work session today. And Thomas, or Wally?
We're going to talk about the changes to some CP language first, and then we'll piggyback on last meeting's discussion about architectural control districts.
Make sure that I get here, Thomas. I think I've got it all figured out. Okay. Thank you, Thomas. I know that it's quite a bit that I gave you. This really, when you boil it all down to, this, boil it all down, this really comes to a question of whether the Planning Commission thinks we need to change our current language, and I'll go over those alternatives, or not. That's essentially what it is. If the Planning Commission decides the current language is satisfactory, it's our intention not to take it any further and to begin our zoning ordinance rewrites in light of that. If the Planning Commission does feel like something needs to be changed, we will, of course, confer with the City Council about that, and you'll probably have it coming back to you in the form of an amendment of some type. That's really what this boils down to. And I will attempt to go through it slide by slide, bit by bit. You may remember that we talked about this several years ago. Probably not long after I got here, about four and a half, four, four and a half years ago, we had a difference of opinion over what the intent of the provision was, and it really centered around the inclusion of the word "any," which was extremely confusing. And at that time, the Planning Commission and the City Council felt like there should be an application process open for conditional uses in any zoning district if the use is not specified in that particular zoning district. So, to bring us back to the current day, currently, it, the way it reads is exactly like what we talked about several years ago. If within a particular zoning district established in this ordinance, a use is not specifically permitted, and an application is made by a property owner to the zoning administrator, the zoning administrator refers basically for recommendation by City Council and approval or denial by the, I'm sorry, by the Planning Commission, and for approval or denial by the City Council. So this, basically what it means is a conditional use permit may be applied for in any zoning district for any use that is not listed as a permitted use. Borrowing from a recent example that we had, which I used throughout this document, the storage yard that was close to B1 property, you remember. If it's in R1 zoning district, you can apply for conditional use. Okay? The opposite of that, and I just wanted to put in the opposite as a contrast, would be that if a use is not permitted anywhere in the zoning ordinance, anywhere at all, that would have to be a precondition for the, for the application. You could apply for a conditional use permit in that case. How that works on the ground is a conditional use permit would not be as eligible, well, the storage yard would not be eligible for a conditional use application in any zoning district because the use is permitted in B2 and GC. By conditional use permit, perhaps in GC. I think in B, might be by right in both districts, actually. But, but the bottom line is, what we would do if we had language like this, what we would do is we would tell a potential applicant, no, I'm sorry, you cannot apply for a conditional use application. You'll have to find some property in B2 or GC where to do the use. That would be, and I mean, we're not necessarily recommending that, but I just wanted to kind of give you that contrast, which it is a sharp contrast. So we thought about a middle road, which would incorporate a little bit of what we have with, with some additional standards for residential districts. So it is a hybrid between the current language and an outright prohibition on conditional use permits. The intent is to limit uses allowed on properties in residential districts, except for those properties for which a conditional use permit has already been approved or upon which a non-residential use is already legally in operation. We left that clause in there because we recognize that a lot of conditional permits have been granted, or a fair amount anyway. A lot, I guess, is in the opinion of the viewer. But, but a substantial number of conditional use permits have been granted in residential districts, and there are also a number of uses that may not have gotten a conditional use permit but have been in legal operation for years, decades, you know. So we wanted to cover both of those, both of those situations. Overlay districts, I just included briefly about overlay districts, but they are regulated by state regulations, and our two overlay districts that would probably be the most active for conditional use permits, the uses are controlled by approval of a master plan at the time of activation. So that was done by City Council with your recommendation back in 2015 for the most recent one for Legacy and Pecosa. So what is the middle road? Non-residential districts. If within a particular non-residential zoning district established under this ordinance, and, and just, just for your information, non-residential districts would be a B1, B2, GC, Village Commercial, and RND. Those would be non-residential districts. Basically, without reading through this whole thing, non-residential districts would function the way that conditional use permits do currently. So, you know, you could get a conditional use in a B1 district for something like a storage yard, even though it's allowed in B2. But again, it would have to be a non-residential district, it would not be a residential district. And I'll put a note here using some of the principles of impact zoning, which is what we look at. That's the lens that the Planning Commission and the City Council always look at when they're looking at a conditional use permit. The big change for being residential. If within a particular residential zoning district established under the ordinance has defined a use is not specifically permitted or is not legally in operation at the time of adoption of this ordinance, or has not been legally approved previously by a conditional use permit, the use shall not be eligible for a conditional use permit, but instead may be located in a non-residential zoning district as permitted, either by right or with approval of a conditional use permit. How would that work with our most recent storage yard? The way it would work, of course, it's been granted now, so, you know, obviously, it's okay. But that person would have been redirected to a non-residential zoning district, maybe even B1, not necessarily B2 or GC, but in B1, or they could rezone that particular property to B1 and get a conditional use permit on top of that. And, and that would be concurrent, and I think that's kind of spelled out on this next slide here.
I just got one question.
Sure, absolutely.
If, we're talking about the different districts and so forth.
Yes, sir.
But how does the overlay work on that? For instance, the flood plan, plan overlay, if you put it in that district, are you therefore not allowed to start a storage shed in the, in a flood plain in a, so far, residential area or business area?
Well, the overlay districts do have their own regulations. The flood plain ordinance has its own regulation. The Chesapeake Bay overlay has its own. And there's a lot of uses that you would not be able to do in those areas that's already taken care of in an overlay. I focused more on the PUDMU and more on the PUDW because those are districts, overlay districts, that upon activation could have a host of uses, a host of non-residential uses and residential uses, whether it's multifamily or single-family or cottages. So I addressed those more, but, but you are right. You're, you're absolutely right that in some of the other overlay districts, those district reg, those district regulations would prevail. In other words, if, if you can't locate something in accord with the Chesapeake Bay overlay district, we're not going to say you can get a conditional use permit to do it. There's a separate process for that, which is Board of Zoning Appeals application in some cases, and joint permit application in some places. But there is a separate way to go about that. Okay. Again, I don't want to, don't want to beat the storage yard example to death, but, but essentially, the, the idea here is to give us a little bit of an out and still allow us to try to push non-residential uses to the non-residential districts. Okay. The change would address the non-residential uses already previously permitted or currently operational residential districts by protecting those existing businesses, which I think the language allows us to do that because it's already existing or already has a conditional use permit. Providing for future non-residential use of buildings which we may wish to remain for future non-residential uses, requiring conditional use permits. An example of this would be the vacant church on Pecosa Avenue, where it's like a, you know, it's a big structure, and we could, I think it's unrealistic to expect it to go back to residential. I think it is reasonable to expect it to remain a business, but whatever business would go in there would be, they would be able to be considered as a conditional use permit, which the Planning Commission would recommend on, and the City Council would make the judgment on. I know the use is 185. Everybody knows what 185 is. It's unrealistic to expect that to ever go back to residential. It's smack dab in the middle of a residential district. It's zoned R1 through there. But if somebody came in, let's just say, for some reason, 185 didn't make it. I mean, they're doing great now, but let, you know, let's just suspend that for a moment. We would expect another non-residential use to likely want to utilize that building. So again, that would be eligible for a conditional use permit. However, starting a restaurant out of nowhere in a R1 district would not be eligible for a conditional use permit. So if it's existing, fine. If it's not, can't do it. This also eliminates the risk of rezoning for uses that may open them up for by right uses we do not want. Imagine for a moment that we told, you know, the people in the restaurant or the former restaurant, 185, or the people in, in the vacant church, that they needed to rezone. Well, they might rezone to B2, and spot zoning issues aside, which we won't get into right now, but it would open them up for a host of by right uses that may not be appropriate for that area. Okay. So anyway, I said a future conditional use permit for these properties will be able to be considered unless expressly forbidden in that particular zoning district. You'll remember way back when, when we were looking at a tattoo parlors, it was expressly prohibited in Village Commercial, so you couldn't get a conditional use permit for it in Village Commercial because it was expressly forbidden. And I've already said in the overlay that they're regulated by state regulations, which certainly is the case with Chesapeake Bay, and, and in some cases, federal regulations with, with the flood plain, which is why I focused on PUDMU and PUDW uses. Again, they're controlled by approval of a master plan at the time of activation. So with all that said, just a few extraneous notes that I think I gave y'all in some of the materials, that as we work through our zoning ordinance rewrite, we do need to include the plan unit development and the plan unit development for mixed use, as well as waterfront mixed use. They need to be added to Section 111 as overlay districts in the revisions to the zoning ordinances that currently, currently not listed, for whatever reason. And I think it would be a good idea, regardless of what we do here tonight, as we look through new definitions, as we look through the rewrite of the zoning district, zoning ordinance, to include what we mean by residential zoning districts, to include what we mean by non-residential zoning districts, as well as zoning overlay districts. I'm not asking you to vote on that tonight. I'm really just asking your opinion. I'll be happy to take any questions or comments, but essentially, what the question is, is do you like the way the ordinance is now, or would you like to see it changed in some way, shape, or form? Either with this sort of hybrid version or just what I call the, basically, the no-conditional use path, which would be the opposite of what we're currently doing. So with that said, I will shut up and let y'all talk.
So Wally, based on your professional opinion, pros and cons between conditional use permits or spot zoning? Because it seems like that's part of the essence of this. Do we want to have the flexibility and just have case-by-case basis conditional use permits? Or do we want to say, hey, we're going to look at spot zoning or the medium, the hybrid? So in your professional opinion, spot zoning versus conditional use permit?
As a planner, I can sort of see the value of both. When you're looking at a conditional use permit, you are looking at the impacts of the use on the surrounding area. You're already doing that. You know, what, what's right in one area may not be right for another area. area. I mean, we know this. On the other hand, what we could do, the idea of allowing, I know the planning commission we currently have and the city council we currently have, I don't have any concerns with those at all. What I'm thinking about is what happens with future planning commissions and future city councils. And if we had the change in effect, and we could address spot zoning in the comprehensive plan, we could address that as part of our revision, because something that is done in accord with what the comprehensive plan says should not be considered spot zoning. Illegal spot zoning. It's spot zoning, but it's not illegal spot zoning. I need to make that distinction, because not all spot zoning is illegal. I didn't really want to get into a big thing about spot zoning, which is why I didn't include it on a slide, but I think we'd have to do some additional work to make the residential and residential division a little clearer, maybe, or a little bit easier to pursue, because we are going to find ourselves in residential districts looking at rezoning a property, perhaps, in order for them to do a non-residential use. So, I can kind of see it both ways, and I know that's not an answer, but also, if the planning commission thinks the current system is broken, then I think it needs a fix. If the planning commission feels like the existing system works fine, there is a school of thought out there that says, don't mess with it. Put it in a different way, which I will repeat. But, the zoning background in me would like to see these divided, but on the other hand, you know, judging something on its impacts is, you know, it's not a bad way to go either. So, I'm not really giving you a lot here, I know.
And just to clarify, so, the application that we had with the storage yard that council approved, that would have required spot zoning to be approved?
That would have required a rezoning probably to B1, because it was pretty close to B1, if you'll recall. And then concurrent conditional use, we could run them at the same time for the storage yard.
And then, once it's zoned, then it's zoned that way?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from, any thoughts? Wow, what are your thoughts?
I guess I can't. Like you say, it's kind of, I mean, you can kind of see phase, but for me, I think it's worked well, and it's given us flexibility.
I tend to agree with Bonnie. I would rather see a conditional use permit than a rezoning, unless we have, in the future land use, we want this to be dedicated for this particular use, then zoning would be a proper option. But for things like the storage yard, or little things like that, I do think that the conditional use permit is good. That gives us the ability to look at each case-by-case basis, and also the flexibility for what may come in front of us in the future. I don't know what's going to come in front of us in five years and be permitted or not permitted in certain zones. That kind of ties our hands a little bit if it's not allowed.
Sure. Well, like I say, it's a recommendation or an opinion, if you will, from the planning commission that I'm seeking. So if everybody can kind of, in the majority, articulate a particular opinion on this, I will take that.
I like it how it is currently. I think that, I don't think we've ran into any issues with the current language necessarily. I think it's gone through the process, and I think it's allowed us to be flexible as a city.
Yeah, like it says about the zoning commission, you know, the guy comes to you and he wants to know if he can put something there, and the zoning commission looks at it, the zoning czar, and he says, yeah, that's okay, or he's not completely satisfied with it, so he says, I'll send it to the planning commission for approval. Sounds like the way it should work.
Does anybody else feel the same way, or does anybody feel differently?
Was there, was there something in particular that really caused a red flag to revisit this language?
Well, as I got into looking at the uses for districts, and you and I have talked about this and with several other planning commission members, we have conditional use sections in each one of our districts. And if we're going to keep the current language, we don't really need to have a conditional use section, because essentially, everything's allowable by conditional use, right? I mean...
But we could also revisit that language.
Well, we're going to revisit that language. We're definitely going to revisit that language. But remember, one of the things that we're trying to do is get clarity, you know, as we go through our processes. And part of that is, if we can reduce a little bit of paperwork along the way, that's probably a good thing. You know, as long as we, you know, refer back to Section 18, you know, conditional uses may be applied for through Section 18, because it really doesn't matter. If it's a conditional use in the district, you've got to go to the planning commission and sue the council anyway. So the process is the same. This, the history of this, to really get to the meat of your question, the meat of this really, well, I guess it's something myself and the zoning administrator, the city manager, sort of disagreed with, and that's why we asked for your opinion four years ago, and city council's agreement four years ago. We've talked a lot about the rezoning process, as well as the conditional use process. I think the city manager, all things being aside, that the zoning administrator would like the language to sort of favor the hybrid that I talked about. But, again, we're very respectful of the job that, you know, the planning commission does and city council does, and we don't want to enact something that is, not something that the planning commission wants, or the city council. I mean, we kind of felt like we knew which way it was going to go, but I did want to broach the question.
So, and let me make sure I understand the hybrid correctly. So, if there is currently a business in that particular zone, or that particular district, and a new one of the same can come in by right, but if it's not a use that's currently operating within that district, then you have to rezone, no conditional use permits?
No conditional use permit.
You have to rezone.
It'd be open for rezoning, which, you know, you'd be looking at a lot of different things with the rezoning, more than perhaps just a conditional use permit.
And then, how would the rezoning mesh up with our comprehensive plan's future use map?
I think what we're going to need to do, as we do our revisions to the comp plan, is we're going to need to add some language in there that says, to the effect, and I mean, I haven't thought about the language, but to the effect that business uses that are pursued in residential zoning districts are eligible for a rezoning, because the comp plan says so. But, I mean, I'm searching for language here. I haven't come up with the language. But you can't legitimize spot zoning through the comprehensive plan. And I think we would need to do that.
And then, if a parcel is rezoned, or an area is rezoned, then that opens it up for any use that's allowed within that particular zoning district?
Yeah, it does, unless we enter into a whole new avenue that cities haven't done.
Versus us, with a conditional use permit, can put conditions on the use to make it fit within the surroundings.
I'm with you. I hear you. Yeah.
That's how I would go. I like it how it is, to give us, we can recommend some conditions on it so that it fits within the surroundings, as if it's rezoned, then anything that's permitted within that zone can come in.
Right. I got a question on parcels of land that are really under the EDA, and they're looking for people to use land that belongs to the city for some type of use.
Yes, sir.
What are they zoned at? To be determined, or what?
Most of them are zoned general commercial. There are some close to us that I believe are zoned Village Commercial. But I believe that's probably the two zoning districts. Sound right to you, Thomas?
Where I think more, that's RAD.
Well, yeah, RAD, yeah, over across the street, right.
Is that EDA also, that what I refer to as the Big Woods on the cleared section?
Over across the street is EDA. There are a few individual property owners over there, too.
Right.
But the assemblage is, yes, across the street.
Versus all the way down at the end of, I guess, Messick Road, you've got a big hill there, has a big sign that says EDA.
Yeah, I believe they own some property down there, too. But, and of course, that's mostly B2, although some of it is, you get into Conservation District.
Yeah, I was just thinking, Flood District, everything. Trying to get there is going to be one thing.
Right.
Heard from Bonnie and myself. Anyone else?
I like the original one. I'll go with you on that one. Okay. We kind of add a little bit of flavor to the process, if you understand what I'm saying. People living in various districts may have a concern as towards the conditional use permit, and that's the flavor, I think, that we as a board bring to the process. It's not always just in black and white, but like you say, all of a sudden a massage parlor shows up, or a vape shop, and stuff like that you may not want, you know, in that area.
Right. And that's going to happen. I mean, y'all probably aware that marijuana laws are changing, and, you know, so there's going to be uses out there that, yeah, might cause us some pause, anyway.
Recommend those conditions, because a lot of, we recommend, and the council does not go by it, as we went, all felt like it wasn't suitable.
And the council's looking for money. I mean, that was the whole thing, unused area versus something that's going to pay taxes, is kind of the way they're looking at it. What's the priority, their budgets, and so forth.
Well, certainly, the city council's looking at a lot of different angles, other than just zoning.
That's exactly right.
Yeah. Also, in that case, well, one thing that sprung out of that particular case that you referred to, since you mentioned it, is that we're giving you a lot more comprehensive plan background now, as well as zoning, because I think that was one of the things that was sort of thrown out there, and just want to address that. But certainly, y'all made a recommendation that was perfectly legal, no problem with that at all. So, you know, anyway, history.
Give us any, anything I know. Yeah? I think we have a recommendation to stay with existing language. We can, as I know we're going to look at all the zoning ordinances.
We are.
And then we can take a look at those.
We'll start that off, thanks, Tom Muck, with Article 1, which has got all kinds of fun stuff in it, but anyway.
Thank you. And that's all for the work session this evening, correct?
One more.
Oh, one more, I'm sorry.
I did want to mention, again, the architectural control district language. You'll find that in your work session packet, my memo, which is very similar to the memo you saw in January. But if you turn to the back page, Section 11.3, Tag 2, the designation of the architectural control district, is where I incorporated the change, which is what I thought your recommendation last month captured. And that was basically to list the commercial districts in that language specifically, to make them part of the architectural control district, where we've had a little disagreement in the code before, in the section before, which is the intent where it says, "commercial districts." But then when we actually get to the designation of the architectural control districts, it didn't list all of our commercial districts. But this is not extending, it's not extending the architectural control district to any more than was the original intent, which is what I think your recommendation was last month. So this is what the language is presented would do, and if it's the pleasure of the planning commission, we'll bring this back to you at your next meeting to vote on, to accept the amended language.
So tying this into our last discussion, if we did recommend, we want rezoning for these areas instead of conditional use permits, then they would be under the purview of the ARB. But conditional use permits within the residential districts are currently not under the purview of the ARB?
Some, because we do have, we do have some residentially zoned lots that are within it, in the area that is within the 300 feet western and eastern right-of-way lines of With Creek, extending from Hampton to Yorktown Road, think of McPherson's, and various other businesses along our commercial corridor within that, that are residentially zoned lots with non-residential structures. So they will still fall within the purview of the architectural control district. But you're right, there could be a case where a CUP is given for a use on a residential lot that would not, according to this language, be within the architectural control district. Now, you know, one thing we do in that situation is we will ask, as part of the conditional use permit, for them to submit those architectural renderings of their proposed buildings. And, you know, a condition is, basically, it has to be built as approved, you know, so that doesn't get seen by the ARB, but it will get seen by you all in city council. So there is some architectural control there, it's just not through the ARB.
Would it be a potential condition to say this needs to be approved by the ARB? Or generally, is it good to say?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we could condition that. That's a good question for Andy, since...
See if I can find an answer for you on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, just because, again, that would be a situation where the property may not be a part of what we say the control district is. But like I said, in those cases where we don't recommend a rezoning, we recommend a CUP. You know, we try to be extremely diligent in our review of the application, and subsequently, what you all will consider, and if that includes renderings of the proposed use, that's what we try to judge on, I'll say.
You know, it's kind of interesting, if you go down our main street, which I guess you're calling part of the Village Commercial Zone, and you look at all the shopping centers and everything else there, the car wash, you name it, and most of those buildings, except for the car wash, were built, you know, quite a few years ago. And how do you determine, I mean, other than maybe, say, painting a building purple or something that might be offensive? I mean, there is no standard for the Village Commercial that I know of that you could possibly start. I mean, if you want to have all the buildings looking like they're, you know, one particular type, or shades of bricks, or whatever, I mean, just have to look down the city hall here. This one looks like an architectural controlled area. The State Farm people down there, this building, the library, and everything else is all pretty much the same. You feel like you're in one area. But you go down the middle of With Creek Road, and I can't find any two things that are like.
There are hodgepodge uses in the comp plan, as it talks about the hodgepodge uses in the different architectural styles that are existing in that business area down on With Creek. I guess my argument would be kind of like sidewalks. If you don't draw a sidewalk somewhere, you're not going to have, if you don't start architectural control of a building somewhere, you're not going to have...
Well, I guess that's what I'm saying, is I don't, I understand that quite so, but there should be someplace where it says, okay, this is what we're trying to do, brick or stone buildings, rather than aluminum siding or vinyl siding or whatever. But I've never seen a standard for the...
That language is in a lot of the architectural review boards' guidelines, where buildings should be erected by materials of a permanent nature. And they can make, and their purview is the exterior of the buildings within those control districts. And so if that's a color change or a material change when something is presented to them, they make that, that recommendation. The last best example, I'll say, was the Dominion Storage Warehouse, where they requested multiple changes from the applicant, which he was agreeable to. But they do have guidance, and, you know, I have a color palette that they adopt as acceptable colors for paint, and so the guidance is there, it's just in their guiding documents, which I could certainly give you a copy of if you want.
I was just going to ask, would you mind, and I know it's outside of our purview, but just so that we know, it would be really helpful to get those. And even if possible, like the last, you know, however many meetings worth of meeting minutes, maybe four or five meetings worth of meeting minutes, just to understand their process. And I know that's outside of our purview per se, but I think it would help us internalize some of these decisions.
Sure.
Thank you.
It's kind of interesting, Dominion Village and the post office almost look like they were built at the same time with the same type of brick. And I'm constantly trying to pull into the post office when I'm going into Dominion Village. But it is...
So as far as this verbiage, just replacing the office zoning district with some more concrete verbiage?
Right. We just wanted to include every district that has a commercial use, so that it is clear to applicants that they have to go to the architectural review board.
Any concerns with that change? Sounds like we're in concurrence that that should proceed.
Right. Thank you very much.
All right, and we have a couple of minutes break, if anyone needs to use the restrooms or anything, before our regular session starts.